And speak or ask that you use the microphone so that people on Zoom can hear you as you speak. With that, we will now move on to our agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is actually is a in requirement to do a reorganization. And this is where the board chair and the vice chair gets selected, as well as most of these are routine votes for appointments and reappointments and such bills. And so with that, we have the reorganization of the board. And I will end my function as the chair for 2020 by seeking nominations for these positions.
Mr. Chairman, I think you've done a good job and I would like to nominate you as chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
We have a nomination by Mr. Wigglesworth. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. I do appreciate the nomination. So I thank everybody for that. Now we'll put it to the board for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any gifts? Okay, the ayes have it four, zero to one with me abstaining. With that, I would like to make a motion for vice chair. Mr. Wigglesworth, you have been my wingman as chairman over the last year. You have a real good sense of ways on township and have controlled the Irish in me at times with my temper and other things, and I greatly appreciate that. And I would be honored to have Scott Wigglesworth as my vice chair. Is there a second?
I will second that also.
Okay, second from Mr. Weaver. We'll put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, please. In my number of years of tenure on this board, there has frequently been discussion about a rotation of the chair and vice chair positions. In that, in a way, there are extra responsibilities and things that really should be shared by all the members. There's also been a precedent of vice chairs forwarding to chair positions. And yet, because there has been the progress of chair and vice chair over the last several years, it hasn't really been a way to have that sequence function. I would like us to consider that we could have a more group of experienced folks to follow in the chair position. Mr. Bennett has been with the board now for two years. Mr. Bennett has gone, on many occasions, to my knowledge, beyond what is required. He has been active on the Board of Hark. He has helped a great deal in getting the four seasons agreement forwarded. He has been very diligent, as interested as I've heard of many of the issues before us. In the interest of having more folks available for the board position following from vice chair, I will nominate Mr. Tom Bennett to be the vice chair for the year 2021.
Well, we first have a nomination for chair and vice chair that was second.
I believe I can all say second that.
And I will put your mind at ease a little bit, Mr. LaFever. After this term as chair, I will not be serving another term as chair.
Well, that's fine.
Will create a natural vacancy and vacuum at this point for that position.
That's fine. I considered a lot about your tenure here and frankly thought with your previous years to even Mr. Brubaker's tenure, that maybe it'd be good to have someone else. Change can be good. You've been a great service. You could continue in that without being the chair. But I'm not going to press that issue. But I would like to get another candidate in line for the chair going forward.
And I'll add that I believe Mr. Wigglesworth has done a great job. I believe he would make a great chair of the board or vice chair. But I do agree with Mr. LaFever that looking back over the past years, it does seem like there's a kind of a generally, not just recently, but going back a ways, it's generally two top people that kind of switch back and forth between chair and vice chair. So I also agree that we might have a three-person rotation rather than a two-person. I can personally tell you that I'm not interested in either position, either now or I don't see it happening for the rest of my term. I just have enough on my plate, so I'm taking myself out of it. I think having three people would be a good thing.
My position is, to be honest, I would like Scott, no offense to Mr. Bennett, but Mr. Wigglesworth as vice chair. And with me not putting my hat in the ring for chairman next year, that will create a natural vacancy for an order of things at this point. Yeah, my promise, I'm not interested in being chair next year.
I understand that. That's your choice, and I think that'd be appropriate. You might wish at that time to stay on the board, and your services could be very valuable. It's just the chair position that I've always heard and we've always discussed, but only discussed as we do with many things, and not taken action. That there should be a rotation. Now, other than leading the meetings, signing some documents, doing some coordination, the responsibility is equal across all four, all five seats here. So that's my position. Let's call for a vote and see where we go.
And two. So I just wanted to say too, for me, I'm not married to it either way. I do think that the chairman position should serve on the Finance and Admin Committee. I myself am not prepared to do that this year with public safety. I feel like we have one last big year in front of us to move forward. So I think it's good to keep Scott there right now. I gladly serve as vice chairman. Again, I don't have to.
Look at the me, everyone is looking at me at this point. I would start by saying that I'm appreciative of the skill that you've provided the township in managing the township through this COVID crisis over the last year. We certainly had our plates full and with many issues to include the wireless facilities. And I think that you've done a great job. I also appreciate the work that Scott's done on all the committees that he's been on and the work that he's done for the township. Having said that, I do believe that there should be a rotation through the organization. I think it makes us stronger as a unit. The more we all know about what goes on within the township, the better. I'd be willing to withdraw from the picture here if I had an assurance that Scott W., if nominated, would accept chair next year.
Yes.
Okay. That being the case, then we can talk about rotation. But I think, you know, I know that you're, you've got your hands full with a lot of things. But I just wanted to let you know, and I think perhaps, Mr. Weaver, just want to let you know that somehow you didn't feel you could do it this year. Someone would be willing. Vice chair. So having said that, at least for now, in this year, I'd be willing to withdraw from the consideration on vice chair. If, again, as long as Scott, and I know it's a lot looking forward, but I think it's important that we have a continuous flow of people who know what they're doing here in this township. And I think the closer they get to the chair and the vice chair, the more opportunity they'll have for that. Hopefully that makes sense.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, with Mr. Bennett's withdrawal, I will request that the vote be taken for Mr. Wigglesworth, and we can move on.
Okay, motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, five nothing. We'll say one thing about the rotation concept. The chair has to take a lot of very unpopular positions. And I am kind of looking right now at you, Tom, to be honest with you. We're required by law to do certain things that are sometimes not popular with the public. And if we violate that and go against, go with public wishes versus what the law says, we get sued. The only thing I caution is when you become chair, you are responsible to keep us out of the courts and to basically abide by what the laws of the township are. I'm just throwing that out there. I'm just making that as a general statement. It's not, there's a lot of decisions I've made over the years I personally have disagreed with, I was against. But the law is what it was, and I voted against four things that I knew was very unpopular at the time because that was what was required of us. And that's kind of an expectation of the chair is to keep everybody in the township out of legal trouble and to guide the township and follow a lot of laws. So I'm just, I'm just saying that. I know that's a very tough position. It's a lot easier when you're not the chair. You can do those kind of votes, but once you're the chair and you're responsible for the outcome of a vote, it becomes a different, it becomes a different item at this point. So that's my only caution, that when you get to this seat, there are some strings that come with it that are sometimes very unpopular. And sometimes you will lose sleep over being the chairman with some of the decisions you have to make because the residents don't understand that that's actually what's required. And all they think is that you're just not listening to them, and that's not the case.
You know, I understand, if I could comment?
Yeah.
You know, I understand what you're saying about unpopular choices and keeping us out of litigation. But I also believe that that's all of our responsibility and not necessarily that of just the chairman. Chairman, as I understand things, chairman's primary responsibility is to conduct a meeting. He really doesn't have that much more authority, although you do committee thing and all of that. Doesn't have any more or less authority than anyone else here on the board. And so I hear what you're saying. It's always been my intention to not get us involved in litigation, okay? At the same times, I do want to challenge the status quo at times. I think that we have the potential to get ourselves in a rut or sideways with some issues. But I hear what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying. So, you know, I think we should just, let's just move forward here. You know, again, if, let's just say, let's just say if Scott felt tonight that he couldn't step into your position because he didn't want to take the, just because you don't want to take an unpopular position or shouldn't want to side, once you get involved, should be willing to move up. And again, I recognize the experience and skill that you have here that a lot of boards don't have. And that's why, you know, I've got no concerns whatsoever in keeping things the way they are.
With that, we'll move on to appointments and motions of staff, board, commissions, committees, and the reappointment list. This can almost can be treated in many ways like a consent agenda. So for number three, are there any items where you cannot vote in a block for all these positions? Take a moment, just take a look if there's anything on here that you want to have an individual discussion about.
And just reviewed and previously, I would move for approval of item three, appointments, letters A through G.
Hey, we have a motion from Mr. LaFever. Do we have a second?
Second, Mrs. Switzer, have something she wanted to say?
I just wanted to point out to you, item E, building code official, building code and property maintenance. We have not gotten confirmation back from Mr. Mimo, so you'd be making a motion, assuming that he would be willing to serve.
That's what we're, yeah, okay. So that doesn't change the motion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, five, nothing. Next up, we have motion for professional services. This we are going to have to break out. I would guarantee a motion, shouldn't be no objections for B, C, D, and E, as well as for a Township Engineer, David Miller, and R2 Associates.
So moved.
Okay, motion from the vice chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. I will now motion for Township Traffic Engineer for McMahon Associates, which I will be abstaining from voting on.
So moved.
And motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, have a second.
Second.
Second from, I didn't see, Mr. Bennett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it four with one abstention myself. Next up, we have resolutions. This one we won't do separately. Employee contributions to non uniform fund, resolution 2021 dash zero one, Ms. Switzer.
This is a pro forma type of resolution for our pension ordinance for the non uniform. The non uniform contribute 3% towards this fund, and this resolution has to be adopted each year to do that.
Is there any discussions of the board? Is there any discussions from audience? Any none? I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2020 dash zero one.
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. And I'll put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, five, nothing. Next, we have the zoning hearing board. It's a resolution 2021 dash zero two, the appointment of Greg Kyle for five years and for Mr. Gary Longnecker for a three-year, I'm sorry, the appointment of Greg Kyle for a five-year term, resolution 2021 dash zero two. I hear a motion.
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Wigglesworth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up is Gary Longnecker for a three-year term. This is for resolution 2021 dash zero three. Put that up for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, five, nothing. Now, we had the fee schedule pending review, so I'm assuming that we'll have that on the next board meeting.
Correct.
Okay. And sewage enforcement officer pending staff seeking a replacement to Mr. Walker. What happened with that?
We just got a letter, he actually sent it the end of November. We didn't realize it until we looked for his fee schedule, but he is retiring or cutting back. So we're going to reach out to the alternate currently as Martin Stoner or anybody else on the list to get a replacement.
So moving on to authorizations, approvals, motions. First up is the 2021 PSETS convention to be held April 18th to the 21st at Hershey. And it's the appointment of the voting and alternate voting delegates to the convention. First off, who's going besides me?
Who?
Are you going to, Mr. Weaver?
Last year, I think Mr. Weaver, well, Mr. Weaver was appointed as the voting delegate. We didn't have it last year, so whoever had signed up last year would automatically have been paid this year. Well, we can get a refund. So I think it was Mr. Weaver, Mr. Bennett.
I think it was me, and I will defer to Mr. Bennett.
Whoever wants it, it's not me.
Sorry?
It's not me, so whoever wants it.
You're gonna do it again.
Well.
Are you gonna go, Mr. Weaver?
Don't necessarily want it.
Okay, all right.
Sure, it's very good.
I'll do this guy.
I just have a lot going on right now.
Are you going to?
Why, we consider offering Planning Commission members or possibly even zoning hearing board members the opportunity to participate. There are many workshops, and there could be some advantage. We have a couple newly appointed or will be appointed members of the planning commission who I believe might seriously benefit from a PSETS convention.
You'd probably be wise to keep your voting delegate a member of the board. But certainly we could extend that out to planning commission members. In fact, I think Mark Hanson typically attends the meeting from the zoning hearing board. Attends PSETS.
He might attend through his occupation with the fair apparatus, maybe?
No, we actually cover his cost.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, as a member of the zoning hearing board. But in terms of the voting delegate, you probably want to have someone on the board.
I don't think that's a bad idea. What's the will of the board? Everybody's kind of nodding their heads to. So I entertain a motion that we extend the invitation to attend the PSETS convention to zoning hearing board members and planning commission members who are willing to, interested in attending.
So moved.
And motion from Mr. Bennett is a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. LaFever. Put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, five, nothing. So right now on the board, it sounds like it will be Mr. Bennett, Mr. Weaver, and myself, and I will be the voting delegate for Elcats. And it sounds like Mr. Bennett is the voting delegate and Mr. Weaver is alternate for the township.
All right.
Okay. And I'd like, you know, from a board perspective, PSETS does cover my registration fees. That's one little perk for being a PSETS. I have in the past year, last year, and I would like to do that again this year, I am responsible for two days on my own for hotel. And since PSETS is covering my registration, I do ask the township to cover my hotel for Sunday night and Monday night. So that kind of comes as a wash to cost the township. But with my role on that board, it's very late nights both those nights. Next up, let's see here, fundraising activities, bi-weekly payroll. I will entertain a block vote for B, approval of banks, C, staff for the treasury bond at $1 million, D, fundraising activities for volunteer fire companies, E, bi-week pay periods for employees, and F, our invoice pay dates, unless there's any objection. Okay, so is that a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bennett is a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wigglesworth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, five, nothing. Next up is the preservation of farmland resolution. It's acknowledgement of resolution 13 dash zero seven designating the board's historical and current intention to protect farmland and to protect and promote ag calls for business East Hemphill Township and to preserve the prime ag cross for farmland and to preserve both the rural and agricultural character of the areas and towns that generally referred to as North of 283. Yeah, this has been on the books now since 2013.
13.
And has telegraphed to developers and others that our intention is not to rezone any ag zoning north of 283. Is there any objections to this resolution? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to acknowledge resolution 13 dash zero seven as read.
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. LaFever. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, five, nothing. Supervisor committee and goals, you guys, you had sent out, it was part of this packet, the 2020 goals.
Yes.
So you have them. We will talk about them at our next meeting. So please review them, mark them up, come ready to talk about what you're, you'd like to see the working groups working on for next year. Obviously, COVID really messed up a lot of things that we were supposed to be working on last year. For committee appointments, is there any objection to keeping things the way they are?
I don't care what committees I'm on, other than I'd like to stay on public safety for one more year.
Basically, everybody wants to stay on where we're at right now. I think we've got good working groups right now.
We're good.
As we relieve those the way they are, there's no vote for that. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. Is there anything on the consent agenda that requires some discussion? Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, five, nothing. Okay, first up now among our action items, normally these action items will have been held at our last December meeting, but due to the snow, we have now been moved to this meeting. So we have first up is the Kellogg's plant expansion sketch plan, approval land development waiver. I don't know if, Mr. Beck?
Mr. Beck is on. Mr. Weaver's, or Mr. Miller's here.
Why don't we start off with Mr. Beck first, though?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For you gentlemen, is a request from the Kellogg company for a waiver of land development, which includes both preliminary and final plan. They are doing a building addition for a new activity on the site. Joe Mina is available. He is the civil engineer for R2. He can go into details about the reason for the project and the intricacies of the new activity they're doing at the Kellogg's plant. But from the staff perspective, staff is in support of the land development waiver with the condition that the applicant complete and record a stormwater management plan, provide a fee in lieu of contribution for Yellow Goose Road improvements, and provide a fee in lieu of contribution equal to the preliminary plan application fee.
Okay. Any discussion on the R2 side?
Joseph Mina here for R2. I didn't quite understand, were you asking for my input now, or was that?
This, George, if you have any input or not at this point, so.
Diane, could you put up the plan set for Kellogg? Oh, there you go. So I don't know, maybe Mr. Miniet, if you could just walk through the plan so they understand what's happening.
Kellogg's is proposing a small expansion in the back of their building. The small, the larger one that is 8,000 square feet, give or take, is going to be a processing facility for sugar, turning raw sugar into liquid sugar that they use to manufacture the various products in the plant. The smaller building is a garage loading and unloading facility where the raw sugar will come in, be dumped off, transported into a raw sugar silo system, and then be transported by a bridge into the pipe bridge over top of the the smaller silos for various different process items and into the processing facility. After they're done creating syrups of various different consistencies, whatever they need for the Kellogg's plant will be processed and used internally. There will also be products stored in three large silos adjacent to the proposed expansion. And the liquid sugar product will also be shipped to other facilities in the area that can make use of this product.
Basically, all this work is occurring on existing, already developed, impervious ground.
Yes, it's currently broken paving, gravel, and some existing paving. And we will be augmenting the paving in the area to make sure that we have suitable areas for the trucks to turn around. And there's currently, to the plan right, there's an area where you see a concrete strip and some gravel where they store trailers. That use will not be impeded. There will still be adequate fire and emergency access throughout the area in the rear. We're just modifying the location of that roadway that's back there by, or I should say, the main accessway. It's more of a driveway, cracked paving at this point so that there won't be any effect on access for emergency or fire services.
Any discussion on the board?
None of this is visible from the roadway on Yellow Goose Road. The traffic that's going to be generated from this is de minimis in terms of the number of truck trips that are coming in and out associated with this work. And in general, it's got little to no impact on stormwater other than the need to manage per the 20% reduction. And in general, uh, it, it's got little to no impact on stormwater, other than the need to manage per the twenty percent reduction. For existing impervious that's in the code. And we will be putting an underground storage bed underneath some of the new paving to mitigate stormwater.
Okay. Now, any discussions of the board?
Sounds pretty straightforward, I think. Me?
Uh, really is not true land development. The ground's already developed. It's, it's based as stormwater management plan. There's no purpose to. Going through land development for this. It's just unnecessary cost at this point. For a very good employer in the township.
And we will also be, uh, taking into account the previous expansion, which is adjacent to, uh, our work, uh, and will be, uh. Mitigating the stormwater from that, which was not required at the time of the previous, uh, expansion.
Any questions, audience? Anybody on Zoom?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I also like to add, uh, when this plan was at the planning commission. Uh, the planning commission had, uh. A very good memory and they remembered the last time Kellogg's was before the township for a similar. Request. And the planning commission actually requested that a note be added to the plan that requires them to, um. File, uh, and get approved, a land development plan approved for any project in the future that would qualify and require land development approval. And they added that to their motion and, uh. Staff just wanted to make the board aware that planning commission was adamant to have that added to their, their recommendation.
Will of the board, I'm kind of Beyonce against that. It's already developed ground. Um, there's, it would be one thing if they're doing a little de minimis development of a green area, a green space, but this is a gravel parking lot. If they're just replying a new process on top of.
And Mr. Beck, um, what was the purpose of that?
The preview, um, Kel, this would be the second waiver Kellogg's has received. And the planning commission made that, um, recommendation as part of the first waiver. And they were carrying it over again for this waiver and basically as a way to ensure that any future project, any like future land development project would be captured. Via the land developer process. Um, however, staff was aware of this and. Hence the reason for the stormwater management plan to be recorded, so we could capture the previous projects and this project. And to ensure that they're on a recorded plan.
We're not waiving the stormwater requirements or anything at this point. So I really.
Yeah, I know.
Not giving them a break at this point. It's just getting rid of one of the processes. It's not a break at all.
I just, I guess the way I'm looking at it, I would have a concern if we did it and hate to reject what. I understand what the planning commission's trying to convey here, but if there's another small project that they want to do that is the same criteria. Why would we require it at that point? I think they're a great employer. And I don't see the need to, um. Put that restraint there. We would have the, I understand, we have the ability to require it if we need it, right? Without stipulating to it that it must be done.
Correct.
Okay, any more discussions of the board? Okay, this one I'll read the motion for. Motion is to approve a land development waiver for the Kellogg company's building addition project on two oh five oh Yellow Goose Road. Per the provide sketch plan, subject to the applicant completing a stormwater management plan. Providing a fee in lieu of contribution for road improvements, Yellow Goose Road. And providing a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Okay, most from Mr. Bennett is our second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth, put it to vote all in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have a five nothing.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the three one zero one Yellow Goose Road sketch plan approval of preliminary plan waiver. Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. Yellow Goose Properties LLC is requesting a preliminary plan waiver. For a project that involves a ten thousand, uh, five square foot daycare services facility. On the property at the corner of Harrisburg Pike and Yellow Goose Road. The project is planning for, um, for stormwater. There's an existing storage barn that is to remain. It is going to be a separate use. And because it is a separate use, there is not going to be any access, uh, between the two uses for the barn or for the use for the daycare facility. They are propos, uh, proposing some road improvements on Yellow Goose Road for the, uh, the impending traffic to the daycare facility. Uh, they are proposing a, um, dedicated left turn lane onto Harrisburg Pike. And then a right turn lane onto Harrisburg Pike. I believe Andy Miller is in the audience. Um, he represents, uh, the developer. And if he is not, I believe some of the other members of the development team, oh, there he is. Diane, could you, uh, share the screen for the, uh, Yellow Goose project?
It's up there, Mr. Beck.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Or yours.
Good evening, thank you. You okay if I take this off so you can hear me better? Wore that mask just for Mark Stanley. Uh, good evening. My name's Andrew Miller with Route Two Associates here on behalf of Yellow Goose Properties. Our project team, just to give you a review of this project, Yellow Goose Properties is, uh, consists of Mike O'Brien and Eric Scott, who I believe are on Zoom. Uh, and with McNeese Wallace and Nerk, Mark Stanley and Claudia Schenk. And our traffic engineer is Craig Malott with Traffic Planning and Design, who's also, uh, on Zoom to answer any questions. John gave an overview of the project, uh, which was, was point on. The only thing that I would add to his introduction. Um, is that the existing barn that is there today, that was part of the original residential homestead, you could say. Is currently used by Oak Tree Development for storage of, you know, materials and vehicles and so forth. And they continue it to, to be that type of use. Um, so we have our driveways separated. We're not, um, touching any of the access on the Harrisburg Pike. Um, but in trying to get our driveway onto Yellow Goose Road as far to the east as we can to create those turn pockets. Um, as well. The other thing that I would, uh, mention is that as part of the project. Um, the residents to the south side of Yellow Goose Road, the Yoders. Mike O'Brien and Craig Malott had a meeting, um, with Mrs. Yoder back before Christmas. Shortly after the planning commission meeting, when we reviewed this at their meeting. Um, and discussed their concerns, uh, in relation to their driveway and the location of our entrance drive. Uh, and I believe they've come up with in, in concepts, some theories to, uh, mend their driveway and make it a little bit more user friendly. So they're not backing out into the roadway, since we're going to be introducing some, some turn lanes and some other traffic there. So just to let the board know, we, we are working with them on their concerns. Um, and, and, uh. Mr. O'Brien is working with them as well to, to appease some of their concerns as well. Understanding as well with this facility being a daycare, as typical with daycares typically open six AM to six PM. No weekends, no holidays or overnights or anything of that nature. So, uh, the traffic generation is during, uh, the daytime hours. That's all I have, since I know you do have a lengthy agenda this evening. Um, if there are any. Questions with regard to traffic, I'm sure Craig could comment on that or anything operationally that you may be interested in. Uh, our submission is for, uh, set sketch plan review as well as the preliminary plan waiver, so we could go right to final plan. Uh, in our opinion, this is a, a small project. There's no subdivision. Um, you know, no public dedication of, of redways and utilities. Uh, on the simpler side of things, we feel we could go straight to final plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion of the board?
There is a notation on the plan reading secondary entrance signage. And I must ask, where's the primary entrance?
That, that is a label. We have the, the primary sign would be out along Harrisburg Pike right at the intersection. There's a label called primary signage and then there would be a smaller directional sign, um, for the, noting the entrance of the facility over by the driveway.
Okay, so there's one entrance.
There is one entrance, yes.
All right, thank you.
Just, just a quick comment. Uh, this is a plan that I very much like. I was at the planning meeting when you presented it and. And I am concerned about the Yoda property and making sure that they're happy. And I'm sure you, knowing your track record, I'm confident they will be. There did seem to be, or did seem to me to be a number of questions relative to, um. Traffic lanes and traffic flow. Could we, is, is now the time to talk about that or just maybe to recognize that there are some, some issues, right?
Uh, so that I don't speak out of turn, uh, as long as Craig is on, he's had some back and forth with both your traffic engineer and with PennDOT. Uh, with the scoping application. Maybe he can shed a little light on where things stand.
That'd be great, thanks.
Some of those discussions.
Good afternoon. Uh, Craig Malott with Traffic Planning Design is, Andy mentioned, we. Do recognize that, uh, this project requires a transportation impact study based on your ordinance. Um, and although access is not proposed to a state highway or new access anyway, the proposed access for the daycare. Is to Yellow Goose Road, which East Hemphill Township owns. We did submit scoping documents to PennDOT as well, just to make sure that if they had any concerns. Uh, that they'd have the opportunity to weigh in. And, uh, we just received word today that they waived. A right to require a TIS. So we will be preparing the transportation impact study. That'll come in with the land development plan, I think. Question that was raised, a lot of the questions, um, that were raised at planning commission, I think the. Traffic study will address, it'll address queuing on Yellow Goose Road as it approaches Harrisburg Pike. It'll certainly address the Yoder property. Um, as Andy mentioned, Mike O'Brien and I met with Mrs. Yoder, took a look at her driveway. I think we have some ideas. She was very. Easy to deal with, was cooperative, um, have some ideas of some driveway reconfigurations we can place on her property to give her and her husband, her family, a little bit more room to turn around. And have to back up their cars out onto, uh, Yellow Goose Road. And then. I would just lastly say on the transportation impact study, which will evaluate a lot of the, the comments that were raised, we did have your traffic engineer review it. They got us a list of, uh, questions and comments that they want us to address in conjunction with that report. Um, so we will do that, but the, you know, the wheels are in motion. We're very early on in the process. We've heard what the concerns are. We intend to address them with the, the transportation impact study and the, the land development submission.
Craig, could you, uh?
Okay.
Craig, could you, uh, verify when the traffic counts were taken?
Yeah, sure. Good, good question, Jai. As many of you know, uh, given pandemic and that doesn't allow us to do new traffic counts. Uh, and use as is, you either have to adjust them, uh, to try to account for the deflation and volumes based on the pandemic. But fortunately. As a result of, uh, Oak Trees Project with Penn State Health and Brookside to the east, we actually did traffic counts at Harrisburg Pike. And Yellow Goose Road in October twenty nineteen, um, as part of the temporary traffic signal that went in, uh, with the decor. So we have valid count data that was taken, uh, prior to the pandemic and we'll use that count data, uh, to do this traffic.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
I was just, I was just going to say, the, uh, having been over to the site, uh, the Yoders driveway, it's going to be quite a challenge to. Figure that one out, but I appreciate the effort, appreciate the effort.
Yeah, she was, uh, she, Mrs. Yoder was willing to have some of her trees taken down, Tom, and, uh, actually allow us to kind of curl it into an area where she has some grass today. Um, that'll give us some room where she can pull in and off. So you're right, with a. Older property like that, with the building so close to the road, there's definitely some challenges, but, uh, we think we came up with something that will give her and her husband a little bit more room to park. And maneuver internally so that they don't have to back up onto the, onto Yellow Goose Road.
Any other questions of the board? Anybody from the audience? Okay, seeing none. Um, this is. Rather common approval at this point, so I will make a motion. To approve the preliminary plan waiver for Yellow Goose Properties LLC project, the three one oh one Yellow Goose Road, per the provide sketch plan. Subject to the applicant completing a final land development plan and providing a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, so motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, five oh, and we will move on.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up, we have CMI's traffic signal contract for maintenance services twenty twenty-one. Mrs. Schweitzer, if you want to briefly explain what CMI does for us on an annual basis.
CMI takes care of our maintenance work on our traffic signals. We have about thirty-three, thirty-four of them. They've done an excellent job over the past several years. We, um, like their services. Perry is very comfortable with their services. I believe their fee went up about. Two hundred dollars since last year. So very minimal cost increase. I don't know if Perry have anything to add. I think he's on the call. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Uh-huh, yeah, everything, uh, that they seem to have done for us in the past couple of years has been, uh, very good, very professional. Their prices are very reasonable and, um, uh, like to keep going with them if possible.
I've dealt with CMI for a number of years. They pretty much do all the signals in central PA. I mean, they're, they're the, the go-to contractor, pretty much every municipality in this area. Has signals utilized CMI because their competitors have to come from the Philadelphia area and they're just not price competitive with CMI. Um, this is actually a professional services contract, so it's not an open, um, bid contractor contract, and they have a requirement for reporting with PennDOT. With our traffic signals. So any discussions of the board?
I was surprised the estimate was so low. I mean, to me, that seems pretty decent. Thirty signals?
Perry, I, I think it was a, a two hundred dollar increase from last year.
Yeah, very minimal. Um, yeah, for, for thirty-five traffic signals that we are going to have next year. Um, they do, like I said, it's an outstanding job. Um, and they, they do all the latest professional services. Uh, you know, ensuring that everything gets reported to PennDOT also.
Any discussions of the board? I'll entertain a motion to accept the twenty twenty-one maintenance contract from CMI as presented.
So moved.
Okay, most from Mr. Weaver is our second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have a five nothing. Next up, we propose us acquire right away for the Farmingdale Road long-term improvements. Mrs. Schweitzer.
So in order to get a jumpstart, I know that we were going to have a discussion on Farmingdale Road, which we have now postponed until, uh, the next meeting on the twentieth. But I wanted to get a, a head start and move forward with either Century or Stan Tech to start the right-of-way process for this project. We need about six, we need six rightaways. Uh, they're just strip takings. They're very minor in nature. But, and I've gotten two quotes, one from Century Engineering and one from Stan Tech. Both were recommended by our traffic engineer. We've used them both. Currently Stan Tech is doing the right-of-way acquisition for Centerville Road, doing a great job. Century, we had done work on Centerville. Yep, the other side of Centerville, Centerville, north, thank you. They did the work there. Both are very capable. The pricing is different. There's about a thirty-eight hundred dollar difference in cost. So I would recommend do, using Century Engineering on this one.
I like that Century in their proposal also puts a non-professional fees and they give us an idea of what title, what their costs are.
They, they both actually did that, but the, uh, Century quote is a little lower in number of hours for their project manager. Which I think affected their, their cost, their total cost.
Okay, any discussions of the board? Uh, the Century one is a little bit. The Century one is a little bit less expensive. And I do think they did a little bit better breakout of the fees. It is clear some of the expenses like title, advertising, legal, certified copy and stuff like that, about what the fees and expenses are kind of big. So it does seem like to make that one would make a little bit more sense to go with Century. Questions of the board?
One of the low bid, right? I mean, that's what I see. The other Stan Tech was a little higher, right?
Yes, about $3,800.
I've got, I've done a lot of years with Century with their former. I forget what the company they bought out that used to.
Yeah, it's, it was a different name. Interstate, maybe?
Was that?
Interstate.
Interstate, thank you. Yes, the acquisition. He did the eight nine six bypass project with me and Strasser Brown. They did a very good job. That was fifty properties that right of way takes with him. And they have been utilized by the Lancaster County for a number of years with the covered bridges and bridges. Again, right away easements and they've been a very good job with all that stuff, very easy to work with and wants it. And that now thrown by Century that would still continue.
Just, just, just one comment. This is, we're, we're not going to execute this contract until we're further down the pike on the traffic plan, right?
That was my plan is to execute the contract so they can start the right of way work. And the the six acquisitions are at the intersection of Marietta and Good.
At Marietta and Good, at Marietta and Good, okay.
Yes, yes, not the other two.
Not the other, okay.
No.
Bye.
Any other discussion? Anybody from the audience?
We did have one, I don't know if anyone in present, but that we did have one person on chat that indicated that she had a desire to to comment on Farmingdale Road. I've been chatting back and forth with her, asking her to. Diane has also contacted her to ask about her address and her full name. And she has not been responsive. So we also have another comment from chat. Ken, which I'm not sure what the last name is. He comments, the anticipated increase in traffic on Farmingdale Road has not occurred. I request the Farmingdale Road detour plans be reopened and reconsidered.
Okay, that's our discussion in January second meeting. Not for what's current in Marietta and Good.
True.
Any other discussions? They see none, we will move.
There is one more chat, I'm sorry. Cindy Brodbeck, seven twenty-four Farmingdale Road. For those of us who actually live on Farmingdale Road, we have felt there's quite a bit of traffic, back and forth a bit.
That's what the next meeting in January is for, not not this one. So, so with that, let me find my motions here. If I get this right. The Farmingdale Long Road Improvement Project Motion to Accept the Century Contract to Perform Necessary Right-of-Way Acquisitions as presented and discussed in the proposal.
Show move.
Okay, motion from Mr. Weaversworth, is there a second? Okay, second from the chair, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it and nay, any nays? Okay, five nothing.
I I just want to add, there was one extra comment that came through. There should be another traffic study to verify impressions from Ken and Judy Ralph.
We just listened to a traffic engineer discuss on why we can't do traffic studies in COVID right now.
Yep.
I think that that one's already been answered. Next up, we have the police accreditation.
Gee Skiles, I think is on the call.
Good evening. You should each have the the two proposals. We had interviewed two different consultants, talked to their reps over the last several weeks. And I gave you those for your review. We would recommend acceptance of the Rogers Group, the request that we can begin work with them as soon as this week. This would simply require a signed purchase order. I think Cindy could sign that. I talked to her and Joe about the process for getting that done. Essentially, this Rogers Group would assign a team of six experienced accreditation consultants to the police department. There would be one primary and but they would all have some integral role in different aspects of our of our policies. And they would work with us over the next year. I spoke with the owner on Thursday and he fully anticipates that we should be able to be ready for our assessment and be accredited by this time next year. He doesn't expect that it will go to the eighteen months that it sometimes takes. So I have various reasons why I would recommend this group or the others, but if you want to hear any of those, I can certainly expand on them.
That's a group you recommend, it's not a group with me. Any discussions of the board?
It's good proposal. You know, I did take the time to to look at it and I can certainly sort of understand why the chief is in favor of them. This was very complete presentation. And, you know, it's one that I would support.
I would just say that, again, we we have a very good chief of police. And I think this will be one more accomplishment that will go down on his record and it's good and he's done it expeditiously.
So I don't know, Cindy, is it just a matter of me giving you the PO? I I think that your signature is good enough on that.
Well, I think we just need the motion and then we'll take care of the paperwork.
Okay, because I have it in my office. If you need it tonight, I can bring it over.
Gosh, you want to start first thing?
Actually, I do.
A little eager there, chief. Any more discussions of the board? Anybody from the audience? Okay, so you now entertain a motion to accept Rogers Group contract for form accreditation service for the police department as presented and discussed tonight.
Mr. Fever?
Ed?
You making the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that? Maybe not.
Of course, I would make a motion to approve employing the services of the Rogers Group for the police accreditation efforts.
For a second?
Second.
Second, so motion from Mr. Fever, second from Mr. Weaversworth, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, the ayes have it, five nothing.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Old Worristown Road, and I will turn this one over to Mrs. Schweitzer.
So I think the last meeting or the meeting before that, we approved an extension of time for McCormick Taylor to complete their work on Old Worristown Road Bridge Project. They have now submitted a request for additional funding to reflect the fact that they have to spend additional time, primarily because of the utility coordination efforts on this project. And they are asking for an additional $18,724.
And our match is what?
Our match is 2.5%.
And our 2.5% Manon Township?
Yes.
Any discussions of the board?
I understand that the time of the project has been impacted by negotiation with the railroad, to my recollection from last year, even 2019. What I must question, though, is that coordination of utilities that were there, it would seem to me they should have been discovered by this McCormick Taylor as a part of their work. And now they ask us for additional funds for, I believe, a third time on this project. It it doesn't seem to be being managed in an expedited way that we would be entitled.
Utility coordination is extremely difficult and time consuming in this day and age. And the initial problem was PPL. That has now moved on to one of the smaller utilities, which I can't put my finger on at the present time. They have needed to to do more work on this that was not anticipated early on. And and this project goes back probably less, just shy of ten years that we've been working towards this. So costs continue to go up. Time is involved.
What has PennDOT, since they're paying 95% of the bill, say about this request?
I have not gotten confirmation from Leona Barr, who's the project manager, either for or against, but she has been notified of it, that of the request.
And obviously, they got to approve the 95%.
Right. Right.
They're gonna get scrutinized pretty hard by PennDOT.
Also sharing, I believe with Manon Township on this.
We we have the 5% split between us and Manon Township.
I still, I still have trouble supporting this. Utilities are all plotted very, very thoroughly and subject to discovery. And being the complexity that they are, it should have definitely caused sufficient effort to resolve conflicts in advance.
Yeah, it wasn't a question of not knowing they're there, it was a question of PPL changing what they were doing, which then affected the other carriers on those poles. But, yeah.
And we had to take action before PennDOT does, obviously, or not?
Yes. Yeah, if the municipality is not on board with this, PennDOT won't consider it.
So, Ms. Schweitzer, so I understand you don't feel that it's something they missed. It's because PPL did something different which caused more work to be done, is that? Okay.
Or the other utilities.
Mr. Fever, do you accept that or do you feel that there's something that they missed something?
It seems to me they should have discovered this issue and gotten into it previously, so we did not have the extension of this project as we have. We're talking engineering services here. There are also going to be physical costs of the project if this is in fact more work coming from PPL. So.
There is no doubt that over the years, there have been problems with this project and things forgotten. I don't know that this is particularly one of them, but there have been.
So.
But we're also in a position where we can't stop the project.
No, we can't stop the project.
We're, we become on the hook for the 95% that's been spent in.
So that was my next, what happens if we say no? What's the outcome? Does the work stop and it just?
Stops and yes, we have, we have a contract with PennDOT. We also have one with the engineer.
All right.
The best we can do, Mr. Fever, would be to revise the motion to read as follows, if you're amicable, which would be the motion to accept the request from McCormick Taylor for 18,724 and support final funds in connection with the engineering contract for the Old Worristown Bridge Project subject to PennDOT approval.
I I hear what you're saying. As far as stopping the project, they would be directed to proceed contractually subject to resolution of a change order that's not approved. It doesn't stop the project. So we cannot be coerced into additional costs continuously on a project, in my opinion, because someone hasn't done their job. We've experienced this elsewhere in the township. I'm not going to talk about the details, but contractual law is very clear on these matters. And the burden of proof is on the contractor.
I can certainly have McCormick Taylor come attend our next meeting to explain in greater detail.
Those, those things would no doubt occur on a, on a claim like this and.
Why don't we just have McCormick Taylor come in there and just, why don't we have McCormick Taylor come to our next meeting then?
All right, that would suffice.
Make a motion to table?
I entertain a motion to table.
Motion to table?
Okay, so we got motion from Mr. Bennett, is there a second? Mr. Fever, are you seconding?
I'll second.
And motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, five nothing.
So, Ms. Schweitzer, for when they do come, if they can, I guess, Mr. Fever saying that they should have known, and I guess what I hearing from you is it was unavoidable. Can that be reconciled or can they be prepared to speak to that?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can make one more comment, I I sort of agree with with Ed. I think on, on one hand, we're talking about time, a delay. I I'm not hearing that they're going to be doing more work, that there was more work because of that. They've just been delayed. And that's what I want to be sure about, that if we're paying more money, that we're getting more work.
That would be later, actually. We're talking design, we're talking engineering here.
But somebody's, there's somebody, there's work involved with engineering and design.
Oh, okay, there would be some work involved.
Like I said, we have them come here, it's not, we're not here, we we all know one way or the other, they can come in here, they can make the case as to why they feel they need a supplement. Anything I will again caution, though, is we're only 2.5% of the bill. And we are, we are beholden by our contract with PennDOT. And that's one of the bad things with signing up for those, these contracts with the department is that we kind of are kind of serve at their whim, even though we're the project sponsor. They're the ones that are funding the bulk of the project and they kind of pull the cards. We can have McCormick Taylor come in and basically justify why they feel they need a supplement.
Will they be here at the next meeting anyway?
I don't know, they were supposed to be here at the next meeting for any reason.
I'm sorry?
They weren't, they didn't have any other reason to be at the main, next meeting, they weren't already on the agenda.
No, no. And they weren't on our list to approve as contractors because they work under contract.
Okay, so next up, we have Plan Commission, alternate vacancies, motion to authorize staff to advertise for two alternate vacancies on the Plan Commission and one alternate vacancy on the zoning hearing board. Any discussion? Ms. Schweitzer? Want to just explain why we're getting vacancy positions?
So we have three alternate positions on the planning commission. Two of those alternates have moved up to full-time positions because of resignations. The third alternate has agreed to continue on, so we have a vacant, two vacancies there. And the zoning hearing board alternate, we have two. One has agreed to continue, the other one has chosen not to, so leaving a vacancy. And we have a process and procedures that we follow as a board and whatever committee is involved with the vacancy. First order of business would be to advertise the vacancy and then there will be meetings and interviews with the applicants, with the board and the commission.
Any discussions of the board? Talked about why we need to have alternates, so this is a good thing to fill the alternate positions. Okay, entertain a motion to authorize staff to advertise for two alternate vacancies on the Plan Commission and one alternate vacancy on the zoning hearing board.
Show move.
Okay, motion from Mr. Weaver, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, five nothing. Okay, next up is an employee severance agreement, Ms. Schweitzer.
Terry Morton is the Four Seasons Banquet Manager, or she was. We have since entered into a lease agreement for the entire banquet facility to an outside vendor, which has caused the position of the banquet manager to no longer exist. Township staff has negotiated a severance package with Ms. Morton. And that's what you have before you, and I'm seeking authorization to make it effective 12/31/20, which was her last day of service. And she, by the way, is a 31-year employee that is leaving or has left.
She has done a remarkable job for the township and it's definitely sad to see her being on. And I'm glad that we have a nice soft landing for her.
Amicable.
Going to retirement as we transition with how we are operating the golf course. Any discussions of the board?
I would like to move the motion to authorize the signature on the employment severance agreement for Terry Morton, retroactive to December 31, 2020, with the codicil that I was very much impressed and pleased by her letter of appreciation that she wrote to this board acknowledging of the these settlement between us.
Motion from Mr. Fever and second by the chair, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, five nothing. Thanking Ms. Morton for her years of service and that's a huge in this agreement. Okay, next up, this is the zoning warrants discussion of, we're moving on to whole business now, and it's a zoning warrants discussion on the scope of signed amendments. So when we had our meeting, it was December with the zoning hearing board, we talked about utilizing this meeting to give some guidance to David Miller so they would know how to put their scope of work together. give some guidance to David Miller, so they would know how to put their scope of work together for the, the zoning ordinance amendments related to signs. And there's also recognition that there's a lot of differing opinions on the board as to the approach that we should be utilizing for this zoning amendment and the signs, and the hope was that we could at least come around a couple ideas that we agreed to and acknowledge there's probably gonna be some ideas that we disagree with at this point, but at least give a little bit clearer guidance to David Miller, so they would know how to scope this out, and I'm assuming he will be probably watching this part of the video, so they could get a little bit more feedback at this point.
Actually, Nick Everstol is here from DMA, so he's, he's our.
Blinders on right now, so.
I would like to suggest that there be appointed two supervisors, one more liberal, one more conservative, along with possibly interested parties from planning commission and zoning hearing. And that a, they, they would address this question. One of the thoughts I had that would go to what came out of the zoning hearing board discussion was that signage in different zones might be more appropriate related to size. And that in itself might serve one of the major questions in this matter. Timing of, of digital signs versus message signs that don't change, these kind of details. I don't see this as a monumental task, I see it as a task, and that task can be brought back to this board for consideration, other refinement, et cetera, I would like to see this proceed.
Any other discussions with the board? I think, I think one of the goals was not to talk necessarily about the format, but to actually give David Miller some meat.
Okay.
To actually, things that we would like to see, the format for the sign ordinance itself. Not necessarily with the process, but what is going, so they can actually scope out what is going to be in this, what are they looking to do for a sign ordinance update? My criteria, the kind of opening this session, would be that our current ordinance, an engineer can read it and struggle to figure out how to apply the sign ordinance, it's too complex. So, my, my criteria is simplifying it so that business owners and property owners can actually understand that, let alone engineers. That would be one criterion, as our zoning hearing board chairman said, every time an application comes for the sign ordinance, I have to reread the whole ordinance to figure out what we can and can't do, and that's not, that's not an efficient way to do things. The second, the second thing on my end, besides making it more simple and simplified, is I would like to see more of the approvals done at the staff level, and less going to the zoning hearing board. I think we can form, not, we use form-based, that's kind of a bad word now. But I think we can codify the ordinance in such a way where a lot of approvals can be handled by our own department and not have to go before the zoning hearing board, so I think as a guiding principle, I would like to see responsibilities assigned back to this township staff for basically approving a signed permit. And making it much more rare that actually there's a reason for it to go to the zoning hearing board. So those are, those are my two overarching principles with things I would like to see in that.
Nick, you'll have to talk into the mic, they won't be able to hear you, sorry.
With staff's help, to this point, John Beck and Colin have provided us a list of cases that have been common, that have come through over the course of the last couple of years, so we can incorporate that thought into it as well, see what was commonly looked for relief, and then utilize that to build that for the ordinance as well, to say, you know, some of those issues could be resolved maybe with amendments to text, and then also making it clear perhaps that maybe a few of those could have been a staff-level review versus rising to something that would need relief, so that was provided by, by your staff, and, and will be deemed very helpful to begin with that process.
I believe that an ordinance can be prepared with very clear and concise dimensions and guidelines. Again, I would, I would tailor it to the different zoning. The problem, I think, more is that someone wants a variance to the zoning, and they want an exception to the zoning. And why do we go to the trouble of having an ordinance, ordinance, if we're going to just allow everyone to go to zoning hearing and have exceptions? It has to be understood, these are, are, these are our criteria. So, I think we can do that, I really do.
I mean, from my perspective, I hear what Mr. LaFever's saying, but I would hope that we would also incorporate a more bent, or somewhat business-friendly attitude as well, you know, times change. You know, thirty years ago, maybe a digital sign is not as popular as it is now. Technology is here. So, from my perspective, you know, it might be nice to reach out to a business or two, specifically a sign business, Fast Signs is located in our area. I mean, what is the market driven, what, what's driving the market, what do businesses need and want? And I'm just a little hesitant when I hear government saying, "We know better than you," or "We know what you need," or "It's our way." And I, I guess I would ask for a little more flexibility.
If I, if I could comment, you know, I don't, I don't think we're trying to, in my view, at least, I don't think we're trying to tell businesses what they need or what to do. Okay? We represent the residents in this community, okay? Again, in my view, a revision or a comprehensive update of the town or the sign ordinance should lead to better signage, clearer signs, less clutter, fewer signs. In my view, smaller signs. We want to encourage environmentally friendly signage. Signs that will be more aesthetically pleasing for the community. I have some issues, I've got some major issues with digital signs. I don't think we have dealt with them comprehensively, particularly electronic message boards. I think we need to be looking at regulating the attributes of illumination, display, public service announcements, and brightness. These are all things that I think we can regulate. I think we need within our ordinances to, to make a distinction between signs of, sizes of signs, and where they are to be allowed. Particularly, particularly billboards. I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't be opposed to banning certain billboards over a certain size. And certainly, I would wanna ban anything that is interactive. And I, to, to follow up on what Scott said about permits, and the permitting process, I think that needs to be a little bit clearer within our sign regulations. For the record, I'd like to serve up this model sign ordinance that I've had a chance to take a look at, and perhaps we can forward it on to our engineer, and along with a copy of our sign regulations. But the model sign ordinance really is a comprehensive addressing of, of signs of all shapes and sizes, so, again, and I, and I would support a working group at a minimum that has board members, planning commission members, and staff reviewing all of this. So, if I could, Scott. Thank you.
So, I think this, I think we got a little grief from this last time, I think everybody can see where the rub is here, there's a totally different viewpoint amongst us as a board on what, what should we, what they should do. And so far in this discussion, as I look at this, I would be, for me, I'm opposed to anything that's gonna be this, this comprehensive or this thick. I don't think it needs to be that complex, I understand where you're coming from. So, we definitely have a difference of opinion, how do we get past that, and how do we get that, get to a workable product, that there's some things that we can agree on, and maybe we'll just agree to disagree on some of these other things.
I'm not, I'm not interested in a hundred and forty-five page, that's not an ordinance. That's a, that's a guideline, things to look at. In, in zoning areas, it's a, it's a how-to, it's, it's a very detailed plan or, or guide. And all I'm saying is, and that's not the only guide I'm sure that's out there. It's, but it's a starting point, and that's all I thought we were trying to do here tonight, was to get to a starting point. I don't believe in my heart that we are that, we are really that far apart on this, okay, when you come right down to it. But there, there, we may get to the point where we do disagree on so, on some issues, but that's part of the process, that's all.
Now, Mr. Weaver, you've been silent. Have to put you on the spot, but.
The only thing I would have to add is something I didn't really think about before we got the staffer sign request is, like on Rorsetown Road, you have a different zone on the west and east sides of the Rorsetown Road, and they allow different size area, sign areas. So if you're on one side of the road, and you are allowed a smaller sign in the business right across the street, I can understand why they're not too happy about that, so. I mean, that might be a case for variance, but something maybe we need to think about, how we deal with that.
My, my position's been pretty well-known over the years, I agree with Mr. Wigglesworth's position with even more to the businesses at this point, and I think that's the, that's the rub with the board right now, to be honest. I, I would struggle to support something that comes from the Philadelphia area, and it's not to be playing politics and bash the Philly area. But we're, we're a lot different than Montgomery County at this point. Montgomery County is a lot more developed than we are. They have different values than Lancaster County values. I think we've done very good over the years, the kind of letting businesses kind of guide us. I, you heard the horror stories for the zoning hearing board, but for every horror story, there's also another small shop business or somebody that's trying to do something that struggles to get something done through our sign ordinance. We can't always be driving just because of a couple corporate companies. The majority of our businesses and the majority of the people impacted by the sign ordinance are local business owners, and actually residents, churches, and other groups of fire companies, and others that would like to do things differently with signs and haven't been able to.
We can do that, and I submit that if we do not get this and tailor it to Lancaster County and have a sign ordinance, we will become Montgomery County in Newark, New Jersey, and it will happen in our tenure here, and I don't wanna see it. We need to get this done. Not that hard.
Again, we still have not given Nick the guidance he needs, because he, there's two different viewpoints at this point, he really needs to know, at this point, a way to prepare a scope of work.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it'd be helpful to direction one way and try to accommodate the other perhaps, but at this point, grab some, some notes from the discussion that I think we've had internally as well, but I think it would be tough to kind of accommodate each side, if you will, it becomes, it'd be almost impossible to change, but you have to do that generally, if there's specific zones, or I think with some of the legal changes now, you, you cannot technically address a sign by calling it like an election sign, you'd have to call it like a wicket or something, so I mean, there's stuff like that, that's more administrative, general stuff, obviously, that, that we can perform that and, and clean that up, but perhaps when it comes to gonna be more commercial friendly, and the size of the sign, whether it's the staffers or anybody else, that's the stuff I think that, that we need to have, maybe the guidance or the, the clear input as to which way to tailor that, because if we try to accommodate both sides, you kind of end up back where we are, obviously, with, with something that maybe you're not pushing anything more than what you have, other than it just clear. I mean, there's, there's avenues there, but it would be good to have perhaps maybe an idea as to how to move ahead, and then we can draft something and come back with it and, and edit that, or if there's time needed or another meeting or hour is proposed, it'll be tough to draft anything, tell you with.
Well, let's look, Mr. Weaver, this falls on you at this point, you are, what would we call a swinging position? Not to put you on the spot, but this is, basically, you have, there's two different points of view, and you kind of need to express your point of view, because that's gonna kind of dictate in a way that David Miller is going to prepare their scope of work.
So what are you asking?
You got, you have one, the one position. Mr. Bennett kind of expressed it pretty eloquently, and the other position is the way Mr. Wigglesworth expressed it.
I'm just thinking, I should, I honestly have to confess, I haven't read through it in great detail, but my understanding is it's based on zones, zoning, in some sense. Wondering if we can get away from that somehow, if, if we can be more about what is the use, what is the size of the use, and that's the size of the sign that you get. As far as the digital signs, I'm not, I'm not against them, as long as they don't burn my eyes out, which I think they're getting better now, some of the early ones are really bright. And I'm not a big fan of the, the quick message change of, I would say like a minute, once per minute, twice per minute, something like that. So I guess I am kind of in the middle. I also feel that the business, I kind of trust the business to know what's best for them, to a sense. But without, I mean, it's hard, you can't regulate good taste, that's, that's the problem. I thought you were trying to volunteer me for a committee to work on the signs.
I think you're quickly volunteering yourself to be in the, the one-man working group right now.
Well, I mean, I, I could be part of a group.
I'm, I'm, this is gonna be one where I do play, chairman, we got two different points of view, and we got somebody that's in the middle. I think we can work from the middle right now. And if we're working from the middle, and you're being an engineer, would you be willing to take on a special project for the township?
All right.
And work with David Miller?
Okay.
And come back with a scope of work?
All right, I volunteer.
The board's okay with that, if we can work from the middle here?
Awesome, thank you.
Okay?
I think from the input here as well, we can reach out to a few and maybe bring that to the table, and go meetings, and just see perhaps what, what a permit would look like from them for something, see how your current ordinance addresses it, and then see what one of the examples, how they would handle it, and kind of bring that to the table and show, here's fifty viewpoints, maybe that helps the starting point. That guidance, I think we can, we can get something on the table there, and then get to the specifics once we get into that group and or this group. Thank you.
I would encourage Mr. Weaver to do that one thing that Mr. Wigglesworth did suggest, which is actually to reach out to Fast Signs and just get a little feedback about what trends are right now. What, what they foresee the future's gonna be.
Scott's not here tonight, but thank you for the reappointment, I was working with you guys, appreciate that, and accomplish this.
But do you feel you got the guidance now, you have the game plan right now, you feel like you can put a scope of work together?
August third here, and what is it?
We'll have it tomorrow, right?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get it tomorrow, yeah. But no, I think that's helpful, I think we, we knew some of the background, but it's good to hear everybody's input, and it's good to help that they're willing to just work together, so, you know, we'll do our best to accommodate that kind of middle ground approach, and then of course, there'll be things that, that either can address or result with the specifics.
Everybody's okay with that, right?
Yeah.
Next up, we got Development Services Project Update, Mr. Beck, do you have any highlights that you'd like to point to our attention?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, going over a few of them. The Brookside Phase Two Sheets Plan is a The Brookside Phase Two Sheets Plan is moving forward and should be recorded very shortly. State Road Commerce Park, the revised preliminary plan and the revised final plan for lots one and three will be before the board on the one-twenty, at the one-twenty meeting. Eaton Control, the plan has been recorded and the project has begun site work. Seven ninety-one Stony Battery Road, that went to the Planning Commission December ninth and will be before the board at the one-twenty meeting. Dairy Road Warehouse, the permit has been issued for the project and they are starting construction. Traditions of America is moving forward to record the Phase Two final plan. And Phase One construction continues. And the conditional use for the Dairy Road billboard will be before the board at the one-twenty meeting. And other than the two new projects we discussed tonight, that is all I have to share at this point in time. Thank you, gentlemen.
And discussions with the board.
A quick question. Early this year, did Schreiber come before us with any type of a development plan for building?
There was, there was discussions, but no, they did not come with a plan to us.
But they've talked, I guess, I mean, I was told that they were in front of the Planning Commission. That person who said that to me is incorrect.
Zoning Hearing Board.
They went before the zoning hearing board for a variance or special exception to increase the amount of lot coverage.
Okay.
They're doing a building addition and they need to go for a zoning hearing board for that.
Okay, so they are doing, they are doing some building there.
Yes. The only other thing, Tom, that could be that Schreiber was involved with was the Lipstick Associates and their project. There was some discussion and some issues between them and Schreiber because of the good drive right-of-way and a transfer of property.
All right, thank you.
Any discussions with the board? I've seen none. Manager's report.
You have my report. I don't have anything to add unless there's questions or comments.
Any questions for a manager?
Just that I would like more clarity and understanding about the Conestoga Greenways. Reading that Meister Township and Mannheim Township are not going to participate, I don't see how the project has a chance of proceeding. I don't, we don't want to fund the whole thing.
No, the funding that was being requested was seventy-five thousand from each municipality, and there were four. Lancaster Township and Mannheim Township decided not to fund it at this point in time. So it's not really funding the whole project. It's just the design and engineering portion. The design and engineering portion was anticipated to be a million dollars. Steiman Foundation was willing to put in half of that. They were looking to the municipalities to contribute seventy-five each. And then they were outside sources from a couple of businesses. We're going to make up the difference. So at this point, we're not sure where we're going to go in terms of moving forward and how that looks in terms of a memorable understanding between the four municipalities in terms of.
I can't see the project proceeding without those two major players. And I wouldn't want us to be contributing to design things where there is not a firm commitment by all necessary parties.
They support the plan. They support the idea. It's just Mannheim Township was not in a position to fund it this year. And Lancaster Township had other ways that they wanted to fund it.
I understand.
So, yeah, I mean, they're... It is disconcerting that the two are not interested in supporting it financially.
Well, the money's budgeted, but until I think we would have all the players, I don't feel we should expend it.
Well, there's still more information. The ball's still in their court to do more stuff, so.
Correct.
It's not something we need to take action on tonight.
No, no.
Hey, we're on hold.
We are basically on hold right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for the manager's report? Hey, we are at public comment. We've actually had public for a reorg meeting, which is actually something new, so. Is there any public comment this time?
Four publics.
You can just come forward, state your name for the record and where you live.
My name is Mel Luckt and I live at seven oh eight Farmingdale Road. And I, I'm at the end of the road, the last hundred and fifty yards. And the speed is an issue there yet. I'm not sure what you can do. But I would, maybe the sign that says twenty-five miles an hour should be lowered. If you come around a corner, I don't think anybody sees it because it's too close to the corner.
Are you on the Mannheim Township side or on the?
Oh, no. Seven oh eight Farmingdale Road is right next to Marietta. So that's a hundred and something yards that people come off Marietta and they just fly up to the first bump. And when they come off the next, when they come from the other direction of north, they're just flying to get off because they just went through the speed bumps. I would love to see another speed bump right in front of my house. I know that's the last thing you want to hear from somebody on Farmingdale Road. And I'm not sure how you can correct it or I just have to put up with it or I put up my own little signs or whatever just to slow people down. But there's enough traffic on there that it's a hassle when you're trying to mow your yard. You're right out there next to people and they don't even see you as they come by because they're just... It's when I'm right next to the sidewalk or right next to the road, when I'm mowing my grass, it's pretty close. So talking about sign each, I mean, I think, I see it in Lancaster Township. When I go into that school in Hills, they have their sign twenty-five miles an hour, much lower, much easier to see, and it's much more noticeable. So I know you won't consider probably another speed bump. But just for the record, I still put up with that hundred yards that people speed up and back and forth. So, and the worst thing is some of it is just the loud pipes that they love to back off with their loud pipes going between each speed bump. And I'm sure the people up the road feel that way too, so thank you for listening.
I can commiserate with you because that's one of the downsides with speed bumps and speed tables is they do reduce the overall speed on a roadway. But they, some people react the wrong way with them and then they actually drive faster.
Absolutely, yeah.
They cross one, so that's actually documented. They did reduce the overall speed along the roadway.
They did.
But that doesn't mean in your specific situation.
My area has a.
If I address the speed, which I can.
Right, all right.
I would encourage you to come to our meeting next, in two weeks, where actually Farmingdale Road is going to be talked about.
All right.
The long-term solution is going to be talked about. I do think the long-term solution will address speeding partially in your situation by just truly reducing the volume of traffic.
Right.
Because what's being proposed will have the traffic on Farmingdale Road with the long tail. So you'll have half as many people speeding, you're still going to be speeding. But it'll just reduce the number. Beyond that, I personally would struggle as to what any more solutions are for Farmingdale Road at this point. We just have people that disregard traffic laws at this point.
I agree. I mean, some people just.
It's worse this year of COVID. It's worse than it's ever been before. And just the driver rage on the roads and stuff like that and speeding and just disregard. Where traffic laws have, is a pandemic.
It's a pandemic without a solution.
Yeah. And what's, it's really going to change once they get the rest of buildings operational up there too. It's going to be even increased that, I think, you know.
All right. So I would again encourage you to come to our meeting in two weeks.
All right.
And we're, because that is actually an agenda and we're going to be talking about that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Till such time as we put cameras along the road and we send written notices with no hearings and claim. You pay the fine, that's it. That car pays. If you give your car to somebody to drive, that's your problem. It's just clear and simple. That's the only way we're going to stop it.
One thing I probably want to play politics, if you ever want to have, go reach out to Representative Miller and say you support the local police having radar guns. That is, that is the one fix that we will have for speeding in the township. That is the quickest fix for speeding in the township. That will allow our police department to enforce speeding below ten miles per hour. Right now, we can't even enforce anything unless that vehicle's over ten miles per hour. There, each session, they get a little bit closer. So they got last, this last session, the state police kind of lifted their opposition to it. But then COVID and other things kind of got in the way with taking up more common measures like that. I would anticipate that it would come before the House and send it again this time around, and hopefully this time around it gets passed. And it's not a money grab for municipalities. That is an absolute misconception. Every speeding ticket, the state gets eighty-five percent of the fine, the municipality gets fifteen. It doesn't even cover the cost of an officer to do a traffic detail. So that is a misconception when people say that giving radar guns to local government is going to be a funding source for local government. And it'll help the state, but it's not going to help local government at all. The only thing it will do is it will give us an effective tool in our toolbox to better control speed than what we currently have right now. So if you want to be proactive, that would be one thing that you could possibly do if you wanted to encourage that. More people would write to the representatives, and I know Mr. Miller is very much in favor of that. But if more people would write and be involved and get a little more frustrated with that, that would be something that would be more helpful. Performer Steve. Anything else for public comment?
Okay. Might be give your name and everything?
Where you live.
Okay, Merle Disner. I'm at seven thirty-one Bar Boulevard. Okay, I would like to know, is the township still on track to get permits for what was voted on for Farmingdale, Orville, and all that, and the lights and stuff?
We're still working with that direction of the design.
Okay, so that's, that's a go. I understand that it was pushed back because of COVID. Though, okay, that's all I wanted to know, just if, because I know the board voted on it and approved it and.
It's under designs and permitting. There is one more action, there's two more actions of the board that will need to occur. The first action will be to advertise the project for construction, get bids. And the second action of the board will be to accept the bid.
Okay.
Those are the two more votes for Farmingdale Road at this point.
All right.
But we are going to discuss Farmingdale Road more at their next meet.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more for public comment? Okay. Anything from the board? Actually, we got done quicker than I thought we would. Normally, reorg meetings take forty-five minutes, but we actually had agenda items this time around, so we still got it done in under two hours. Appreciate everybody's time. And for those from Farmingdale Road, this is the main agenda item in two weeks. A whole bunch, actually, a whole bunch of traffic updates, not just Farmingdale Road. There's a lot of traffic things to talk about. So we would encourage you to come in and take. I think that with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting at six twenty-one. I'm sorry, we are going to go into a brief, short executive session for a personnel matter, and we will not return.